Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 13, 2022. Consistent with the Governor's orders, this meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers and also by utilizing video conferencing. All attendees in the council chambers will be required to follow current state and county public health guidelines as posted on the doors. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices and do not access Zoom during the live meeting as it will cause interference with the audiovisual system in the council chambers. Tonight's meeting is also being conducted utilizing video conferencing and electronic means consistent with Assembly Bill 361 and may be viewed on Zoom via the link on the agenda, by live stream on YouTube by entering Agora Hills City Council Meeting in your browser and clicking on the link for July 13, 2022, or you can view live or archived meetings on the city's website at agorahillscity.org and click on the Watch Meetings Online button. And I will now defer to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. If we could just pause for a moment, we're going to get Zoom back on board. As soon as Stephen gives us the clearance, we'll move forward.
Sounds good. I didn't see we dropped. Okay, I think we're ready to proceed. If you'd like to continue, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak on any item listed on the agenda. Any person in the council chambers who wishes to speak or submit a written comment is requested to complete a public comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. Comments submitted at the meeting will be provided to the city council for review and filed with the official record. For any person participating remotely, written public comments were requested to be emailed by 4:00 p.m. today and distributed to the city council in advance of the meeting. To request a speak during public comment, please click on the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar. Request to speak must be received prior to the mayor closing the public comment portion of the item. Public testimony for all speakers is limited to three minutes per speaker. Written public comments will not be read aloud by the city clerk. For full details, please refer to the Public Participation section on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call this meeting to order. And Mayor Protem Anstead, would you lead us in the flag salute? Thank you. And I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Here.
Councilmember Northrup?
Here.
Councilmember Weber?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anstead?
Here.
Mayor Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Lopez, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. No closed session was held tonight, and so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And will the maker of the motion to approve the agenda and the second as well, please state your names.
Councilmember Northrup moves to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Buckley Weber seconds the motion.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, but under our Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental reports, it's my great honor to introduce our new Lost Hills Sheriff's Station Captain, Jennifer C. Two. As she comes up, I'm just going to read a little bit of a background for the public. Captain Jennifer C. Two is a 24-year Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department veteran. She was one of the first women to graduate as an honor recruit from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy, graduating at the top of her class. She began working for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department as a custody assistant in 1997 and rose through the ranks, working in the Men's Central Jail and Century Regional Detention Facility and patrol at the Compton Station. She spent a year in Iraq, from May 2004 to May 2005, operating convoys and managing security operations for members of the U.S. Department of State, on an approved leave of absence from the Sheriff's Department. She returned to the States and began working for the Department of Homeland Security on the Joint Terrorism Task Force. She later went to the East Los Angeles Sheriff's Station as a Sergeant and Deputy Director of the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, a cooperative effort between the United States' federal, state, and local law enforcement and public safety agencies to address terrorism-related threat intelligence for the greater Los Angeles region. In November 2018, just three days before the Woolsey Fire started, she was transferred to a position as Operations Lieutenant at the Lost Hills Malibu Sheriff's Station and was made Acting Captain the next day after the regular captain went out on medical leave. She led the station through two major disasters, the borderline shooting in nearby Thousand Oaks and the devastating Woolsey Fire, and was widely recognized for her role in overseeing one of the largest evacuations in the history of Los Angeles County. In 2019, Senator Henry Stern named her as Woman of the Year for the 27th Senate District. She served successfully as Watch Commander at Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station and was transferred to the West Hollywood Station as a Watch Commander. She returned to Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station in May of this year and is the first woman captain in the station's 30-year history to lead personnel that provide law enforcement services for Agora Hills, Calabasas, Hidden Hills, Malibu, and Westlake Village, and she is also a resident in our area. So it is with great, great pleasure that I welcome and introduce you to Captain Jennifer C. Two. So welcome, and we would love to have you say a few words.[641.04][641.04](APPLAUSE).
You, and we've dealt with some serious things together, and it's just great being back, knowing that you're my partners in this. And Nate has been amazing, Romero, just the entire city staff here has been truly amazing coming back. So as I come back, I look forward to what we can do better. And obviously, the first, I have three major priorities. My first priority is emergency preparedness. You mentioned Woolsey Fire, and I know Councilmember Northrup, you were the mayor during that time, and I sat on your mayor's board, and it touched our entire community. And we're looking, we're in daily talks with Drew Smith of what we can do, what we can do better together. And so right now, we're working on evacuations plans. We're rebuilding our EOC downstairs. I received funding for that. So it's really Office of Emergency Management, Kevin McCown, who is a resident of Agora Hills, Drew Smith and I, working hand in hand, literally speaking every week, seeing what we can do to make sure that we are prepared for the next fire or whatever it may be, whether it's an earthquake as well. Next one is crime. So unfortunately, we have a rising crime issue here in the Malibu Lost Hills area. I will say that Agora Hills is the only city that's had a decrease in burglaries. So that is good for us here in Agora Hills, but we need to do better. We need to think about innovative ways that we can address our crime issues. So I'm happy that the flock cameras are coming in, and it's a tool for us to really use. Calabasas is using them, so is Malibu, and it's a great tool for us. We're excited about that. Another thing that we're doing is the Detective Lieutenant has had, he was a Malibu Liaison Lieutenant, Westlake Lieutenant, Hidden Hills Lieutenant, and he's spread too thin. So what we're doing is we're taking those things off his plate and having them really focus on innovative strategies to address our crime problem. So good news that we just caught two residential burglars, and we worked that case with Thousand Oaks. So that's what we're doing, a lot of working cases together, and we're filing those cases in Ventura. So we're coming up with innovative ways to address our crime issues. And then three, our traffic concerns. You know, obviously, it's Agora Hills and, you know, four other cities plus the county's area, that's 187 square miles. And we've had some traffic concerns. One, unfortunately, we had a fatality here in Agora Hills last month. And so we want to look what we can do to address our traffic concerns and make sure that our deputies are, whether it's a DUI or something like that, that are working proactively to make sure that our streets are safe. And I look forward to working with each of you, and I'm really just, I'm so grateful to be back here in a community that I love and with dear, dear friends as I look at each one of you. It's very special to be back, so thank you.
Thank you. We are so, so happy to have you back. Does anyone have anything to add? Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Yes, welcome back, Captain. It's great to see you, and I know that you're well-loved in our community and the region, and we look forward to working with you, and you know you can count on us. If there's anything we can do to help you achieve your goals, you'll let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Northrup?
Well, Captain C. Two, it's good to see you back, and we worked a lot together the year I was mayor, and you were the Acting Captain after the Woolsey Fire. And I'm very excited about continuing initiatives that we started back then. I'm actually heartened to hear about our burglary statistics here in Agora Hills, because even though we were in recovery from the Woolsey Fire, I remember very well that you were one of the people that came out when you were Acting Captain and had meetings with the people in our neighborhoods about their neighborhood watch programs, about how they could be proactive. And I was so impressed by you and your deputies sitting there for their questions, their concerns, their emotions, and their fears. And I think it has made a difference, because you shared very concrete information and concrete tips, and if our burglary rate is lower, then I have a feeling part of it is your willingness to bring people out when asked. And I just couldn't be more excited about the initiatives you're going to bring in terms of emergency preparedness. I remember sitting with you and looking at the real-time flame mapping, which we're now getting that technology in with beacon boxes. So we had a break while you had to serve some other people, but I couldn't be more excited to have you back and really kind of hit the ground and continue all those initiatives that we started a couple of years ago. So welcome back, Captain C. Two.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Captain C. Two, I also want to just say, welcome back, and I'm very excited that you're the captain. I think you've already laid out a great goals, these kind of three main focus areas, and I can't wait to continue to work with you on those three areas. And I think, I also want to echo the comments of Councilwoman Northrup about the tips, because I actually was one of the ones that implemented some of the tips, I'm talking about personally, that you gave, and I'll never forget that. And I, again, your leadership, I just really respected it then, and I really respect it now, and I look forward to implementing a lot of the initiatives that you talked about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weber, any comments?
Yes, I would. Jennifer, thank you. So happy that you were promoted and got this assignment. You and I have known each other for many, many years, and not only are you a great role model and a wonderful leader, you're also a wonderful wife and mother, and how you do all of those things at the same time is beyond me. So I just wish you all the best. God bless you and your team, and long and happy time here in the Lost Hills. So thank you.
Thank you. And I will conclude by saying we're very excited. I think Romero, Adava, Amy Brink, and Erica Diaz were working on a mayor's table to have you come out, so I know that will be very well attended. The residents of this area are very excited to have you back as well and very proud of you. It's always amazing to have a strong leader, woman leader blazing the path, and, you know, you're making history here in our area, and we're very proud of you, and we're here to help you in any way we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. And now we are going to the City of Agora Hills 40 facts for 40 years. We usually have two facts every meeting, but today we're going to focus on one, a very special fact, and it is regarding Bruce Wizen, who has really made an impact with his family on this area. So Bruce Wizen, who was a son of business proprietor and former owner of Wizen Marketplace, Art Wizen, he just recently passed away, I think this week it was. Born in Los Angeles in 1931, Bruce Wizen and his younger sister Hannah were raised in the East Valley. After graduating from high school at North Hollywood High, Bruce served in the U.S. Army during the Korean War. His army service came to an end in 1954 with the birth of his son David at the San Francisco Presidio. Within a few months, Bruce and his wife Deanne moved to Agora, where he went into the restaurant business with his parents, who owned the landmark Wizen Shopping Center in Agora Hills, Agora at the time. The Wizen Center once housed the Bear Cabaret, Cornell Corners, and the Wizen Arcade, and remains one of the most popular shopping centers in Agora Hills. In the late '60s, he attended San Fernando Valley State, also known now as CSUN, where he earned a BA in anthropology and a master's in marriage and family counseling. Bruce and his then-wife Shelley married in 1986. In 1991, in honor of his parents, they created the Shirley and Arthur Center, dedicated to the Jewish future. His parents were founding members of Adat Ariel, where he was a lifelong member, and all five of his children and two of his 12 grandchildren had their benedict mitzvot there. Bruce also founded the Wizen Center for Continuing Education at the American Jewish University in 2006 and is now among the largest such programs in the world. Bruce was a philanthropist, business owner, real estate property manager, and licensed psychotherapist and family counselor. His life orbited around family and his endless generosity and his playful soul made a lasting impression on everyone. The City of Agora Hills wishes to honor Bruce Wizen and the Wizen family for their impactful contributions to our community. We extend our sincere condolences to his family and friends, and later tonight, the city council will be adjourning tonight's meeting in his memory. So this is our fact for the meeting tonight, and I think it's very timely and very special for a very special person and family. Thank you. Okay, with that, are there any other reports from staff in this section? Okay. City Council members? No. All right, then we will move to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to the city clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. So I will defer to our city clerk to see if we have any public comments tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. We do have one in-person speaker, Kathy Creach. If you'd like to step up to the podium, thank you.
This is scary for me. So, Madam Mayor and honorable council members, my name is Kathy Creach. I live at 5709 Fairview Place in Old Agora with my daughter and her family. My concern is with short-term rentals, and the house that backs on our property became in November a short-term rental, and it's basically a party house. It's a six-bedroom house, renting for about $1,000 a night. It is fully booked every single day, every single night, sometimes quiet, often not. They've listed it under Airbnb, VRBO, myhotel.com. Owner lives in Florida, has no concern about our neighborhood. I don't, and my daughter also, she sent a letter in. We don't feel this is a proper use of a home in our quiet, rural Old Agora. We have constant noise evenings. I go out and shine a flashlight at night out of my bedroom windows down to their pool area when it's late at night, try to quiet them down. Sometimes I go down there and am cussed out often and called names that I've never been called before in my life. We get asked for chickens, can they pet our donkeys, how are the dogs? My kids, the grandkids swing back there, our chickens are back there, so we don't let them go back there anymore when there's parties going on. In the last couple months, we've had fire jugglers in the evening in the backyard. Couple weeks ago, we had a stripper at 3:00 in the afternoon. We were down with the chickens, and the kids were with us, and we heard a lot of yelling and hooping and hollering, and we looked. There was an elevated platform with a fully naked woman doing her thing. The owner doesn't seem to care about the parties. We've contacted her directly, we've gone through Airbnb, and now we just call the sheriff, and they come out. And so we have pool parties late at night, jacuzzi, you know, like I said, the fire juggling, which is totally inappropriate. Our house would be the first one to go. The other neighbors on foothill talk about the traffic, sometimes 20, 30 cars parked, trash all over the place. It's just very inappropriate. I understand it's going to be an agenda item coming up soon. We look forward to this. Our neighborhood has a little VRV Gone chat site that we're all, like, connected on, so I thought I would just come in and express our concerns. So I look forward to when it's on the agenda, and maybe I can help participate in some feedback with this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We are very happy that you came and expressed the concerns. We did receive the email, I think, from your daughter.
That was for me, actually.
Oh, with you?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, you know, continue to connect you with staff, because I think while we're in the process of working on our short-term rental ordinance, we can hopefully give you and your neighbors maybe a checklist or toolkit of what, who you can call for what issue. Obviously, when there are fire jugglers, there are things that need to happen.
Right, yeah.
So I'm going to have staff, you know, follow up with you again, just so, and we have a new code compliance officer, so we can go ahead and make sure that you and all of your neighbors know what's allowed, when it's allowed, what's not allowed, and who to call.
Right. And it's, I've also researched a lot of the cities around us and seen some of the ordinances they are also enacting, and it's, some of them are very severe, which I think we should be too.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll definitely take that into consideration
Thank you.
as we're crafting this, and it's
Thank you so much.
a priority for us as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Yes, if I can just say, Ms. Creach, I just wanted to say that thank you for contacting the sheriff. I hope that you had an opportunity to meet the new captain. She just left, but she might be floating around outside, and that that's a good way to handle the situation in the moment. And if you sign up on our website, you'll be informed of when that is on, when that agenda item is coming before us.
I think I have signed up.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to go, and I do see the captain standing there. So if you did want to grab her, she's right there. But don't feel like you have to stay or go. It's up to you. Thank you. Are there any additional public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. Just as for the record, Ms. Creach did submit her comments in writing, and she also submitted a letter from her daughter, Cheryl Nauruzi. I don't have any further comments or speakers, but I will defer to staff to see if we have anyone online.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There are hands raised to speak on this item. Before we begin live testimony, if you do have your hand raised, but you do not intend to speak on this item, please take a moment now to click on the lower hand tab on the screen. Request to speak must be received prior to the mayor closing the public comment portion of this item. Speakers will be called in the order they appear on my screen. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. A 30-second notice will be provided by the clerk, and the microphone will be muted when the three minutes have expired. Prior to speaking, please clearly state your first and last name and provide your city of residence for the record. Our first speaker is Neri Gauthier. Go ahead, Neri.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Neri Gauthier. I live in Old Agora as well, and I actually own an Airbnb in Old Agora. And I just wanted to comment, I mean, definitely the Airbnb, I think it's on Fairview, it's egregious, it sounds like a party house, but we have had an Airbnb in Old Agora for about four years, and we've rented it over 100 times, and there's only been a couple times where there have been parties that were unauthorized by us. So I just want to comment on that, that the majority of time for us, it's been very quiet, very respectful. We do live in the area, and we always try and make sure that it's not bothersome to any neighbors. So whatever you implement, I just ask that it keeps in consideration that most Airbnbs, and Airbnb also does have a zero-party tolerance rule right now in place. So the great majority of time in general for Airbnbs, it's not about parties.
Thank you. And I will just add that when we do have this item on our agenda, we absolutely would want your feedback and best tips, you know, what works for you, what doesn't as well. So we look forward to hearing not only from the neighbors, but also those who are operating successfully. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There are no further hands raised to speak on this item.
All right, then we will move to our consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items
This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to the city clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I'll once again defer to our city clerk to see if we have any public comments for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. We do not have any in-person written or speaker comment cards. However, I'll defer to staff to see if we have anybody online.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from any council members, or does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Not seeing anything, I will ask for a motion and a second, and will the maker in the second please state your names?
Councilmember Buckley Weber moves to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Councilmember Northrup, seconds.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt the following nine consent calendar items. Number one, approve minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 27, 2022. Number two, approve demand warrant register number 875. Number three, approve and make Assembly Bill 361 findings for Special Brown Act requirements for teleconference meetings. Number four, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with MNS Engineers, Inc., for construction management services related to the roadside drive bridge widening project. Number five, approve agreement for landscape consultant services with Broderston Associates for number one, city-initiated nonreimbursable projects, and number two, non-city-initiated reimbursable projects. Number six, approve agreement for consultant services with Geodynamics, Inc., for geotechnical review services for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Number seven, approve notice of completion for Recreation and Event Center Improvements Project, NIB number 2103, CDBG number 602305. Number eight, approve rejection of claim for damages, Chandra Jero. And number nine, approve rejection of claim for damages, Jeffrey Jero. Now I will defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is to consider ordinance number 22-460, amending the prima facie speed limits, hope I said that right, on one segment of Reyes Adobe Road between Agoura Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And I will defer to our Director of Public Works, our city engineer, Ms. Forte.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, honorable council members. Before you tonight is a recommendation to reduce the speed limit of a segment of Reyes Adobe Road from Agoura Road to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Would you please advance the slide? Thank you. The California Vehicle Code was amended earlier this year after the passing of Assembly Bill 43 to allow cities under very specific circumstances to reduce speed limits. This April, the city council made it a goal to evaluate the roadway network within Agoura Hills to determine where speeds may be reduced. In consultation with the city's contracted traffic engineer, only this segment of Agoura Road was recommended for a speed reduction in accordance with AB 43 at this time, reducing the limit from currently posted 45 miles per hour to 40 miles per hour, which was the immediately prior speed limit. AB 43 opens up some additional opportunities for the city in 2024, and we will continue to evaluate this and return to the city council as appropriate. Next slide, please. So, in order to implement the recommended reduction, ordinance 22-460 is presented for reading tonight with a second reading on August 10. Should ordinance 22-460 be approved, signs may be replaced with a new limit 30 days later, and flags, as shown on the slide here, are used to draw attention to that change as required by the manual on uniform traffic control devices. After the new limit is posted, it will be an additional 30 days until the limit becomes enforceable. So if someone is caught exceeding, excuse me, exceeding the new limit during those 30 days, they'll be issued a citation rather than a ticket. After that time, the limit becomes fully enforceable, which is likely to be in mid-October following that timeline. With that, I conclude this presentation. Ordinance 22-460 makes all of the required findings and has been reviewed and deemed acceptable by our city attorney. We have our city traffic engineer, Laura Foranash, with us tonight, and together we'd be happy to field any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before we move into deliberations, does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Ms. Forte, do you recall when the city council increased the speed limit to 45? What year was that?
I believe that that took place after the most recent speed survey, which was completed in 2017. Is that correct? Yes.
Thank you. And can I just, will you be doing some sort of social media and PR so people know what the flags with the speed limit sign mean?
We can absolutely do that. I'll consult with city manager, Hamburger, and Erica Diaz to make sure that that's appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? More questions? I have one question. When the speed survey in 2017 and then the law passed that really forced the council to increase that limit, wasn't there a second location that that happened, and did we look at that location as well?
There, yes, there wasn't a second location. We discussed this a little bit at the goal-setting session earlier this year. That segment was just between Cornell Road and Agoura Road on Canaan. And so with the Canaan-Agora study, I'm sorry, intersection project planning that we're doing, and the two lots that are currently under, maybe developing soon, it didn't seem appropriate to reduce that limit at this time since there's no driveways and for a number of reasons. Does that, is there anything further that you think we should add?
Yeah, just typically you would do a study after, if capacity was increased on the roadway, so an additional lane, or like Jessica mentioned, additional development.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Then, we will move to public comments. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I will defer to our city clerk to see if we have any public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There are no in-person written comments or speaker cards. I'll defer to staff for any online public testimony.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
All right, then we can move on to deliberations if there are no further questions. Who would like to start? Councilmember Northrup?
Well, since this was kind of my goal, I want to thank staff for really getting on it. I think this is important. The reason we were forced to raise our speed limit was because people were speeding, and I just think that's not a criteria that we ought to be using. I think this is appropriate. It gives people plenty of speed to get home after they get off the freeway. 40 miles an hour means they'll be going somewhere around 45. We know how it works. But having people go almost 50 because the speed limit is 45, to me, creates a danger, particularly when one of our biggest parks, Reyes Adobe Park, and the historical site is right there, and there are people constantly crossing that road. I'm actually really glad it's going to be fully enforceable by mid-October because that's when we have Halloween and we have kids going across those streets. And I think safety is just such a paramount concern that I really hope that the rest of the council is on board and we can get everything going. I agree with the outreach. I agree with putting the signs up, letting people know. I think anybody that lives in those surrounding neighborhoods is going to be happy that we're doing that, because as I recall, people weren't thrilled that we were raising the speed limit. So thank you, staff, for getting on this, and I'm 100% behind it and ready to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked the year that we passed that because it feels like it was yesterday, but I know that Councilmember Northrup and Councilmember Weber were on the council at that time as I was, and we couldn't believe we were being forced by the state to increase the speed limit on our street, on Reyes Adobe. And we, I remember us having a hearing where we were pretty upset about the whole thing, but our hands were tied. So we increased it to 45, and I just chuckle and I'm thrilled, and thank you, staff, for bringing this back so quickly so that we could go, if the council approves it, that we can go back down to 40 miles per hour, which is what, it never should have been raised in the first place. But so be that, we'll just move forward. So thank you for everything. I'm ready to move forward and support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Weber?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I thank you, thank Elise for bringing this up because we were all sort of, couldn't believe our ears when we had to make a decision like this, when we all wanted it to go the opposite way. So I appreciate very much the bill being passed and signed into law, and we now have an opportunity to right what I thought, what I think was wrong. And I'm certainly ready to move forward, and I appreciate the staff going so fast on this. So I'm more than ready to move forward.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Anstead?
Thank you. I think the comments I have, first of all, is I think it's great that we're considering this at the same time that we're looking at the local roadway safety plan. I mean, this really fits in nicely with that, and it's one of the, basically one of the countermeasures to help me make sure that we provide safety for our pedestrians and for our bicyclists. And in fact, one of the issues that's been brought up, and one that was used as one of the case studies in the local roadway safety plan, is located north of To Boulevard on Reyes Adobe at Stonecrest. And what tends to happen, or at least the way that I believe happens, is that you have vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed, whether it's at 50 miles an hour or 45 to 55, and they're going through that light and they're continuing that speed instead of slowing down into the residential neighborhood. So this way, when we have the 40 mile an hour speed limit going through Reyes Adobe, that will already have them going at a slower rate of speed when they enter that residential area. So I think this is a great idea. I think it, like I said, it fits in well with what else is on our agenda, and I'm happy to vote for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I agree, I want to thank staff for bringing this back. This, I remember when this item came before the council, it was before I was on the council, and I remember being here and watching incredulously that our council was really being forced to do something that just seemed so inane. And so I'm very happy to see this go back to the speed limit that is reasonable, that our residents believe is reasonable, and, you know, especially knowing that we are in doing improvements along Reyes Adobe Road, particularly at, near the park where people cross, to get, you know, to get across from one neighborhood to another, to the park. I think this is timely, and, you know, as we'll talk about very soon, we know that one of the fatalities that we've seen was along Reyes Adobe Road at Thousand Oaks. And so it's very important, I'm very happy that we, you know, got this up to the council so quickly, and I want to thank you, and also ready to move forward. So I'm hearing a lot of consensus here, and the staff recommendation is that the city council introduce, read by title only, and waive further reading of ordinance number 22-460, amending the prima facie speed limits on one segment of Reyes Adobe Road between Agoura Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So if someone would like to make that motion in a second, we can move forward with the vote.
Councilmember Northrup moves to approve as read by the mayor.
Mayor Protim Chris Anstead, seconds out.
Thank you, and we'll ask our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. And at this point, I will defer to our city attorney, Candace Lee, to read ordinance in title only.
Yes, good evening, honorable mayor and members of the council. I'll be reading by title, ordinance number 22-460, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Agoura Hills, California, amending the prima facie speed limits on one segment of Reyes Adobe Road between Agoura Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we can move on to our next item, which is a discussion to consider the adoption of resolution number 22-2016, approving the local roadway safety plan. And I will once again defer to our Director of Public Works, city engineer Forte.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. My second item this evening is the, and good evening once more, honorable council members. My second item this evening is the consideration and recommendation for the approval of the city's local road safety plan, which we will call the LRSP for the remainder of this presentation. The LRSP is a planning-level document that uses data to evaluate safety concerns and identify proven safety improvements that can be used to tackle those concerns. Would you please advance the slide? Thank you. Tonight, we'll discuss what an LRSP is, we'll discuss our safety history and trends to understand the primary causes of crashes, we'll identify emphasis areas. That's a traffic engineering term for an area that can provide the largest impact on transportation safety. We'll discuss countermeasures, which implement, I'm sorry, which are implementable projects that have statistical records of improving roadway safety, and case studies that we've developed to help apply them across the city. We'll explain how the LRSP plays into our hope to secure highway safety improvement program funding, and we'll discuss what the next steps in this process will be. Would you please advance the slide? Before we move on to the details of the document, I would like to address an amendment that has been made since the time the LRSP was distributed publicly. It was brought to the attention of staff that the intent of the case studies was not clearly defined. Therefore, clarifying language is being recommended to the executive summary of the LRSP. That language can be found on pages E2 and E3. Specifically, the last paragraph of page E2 was removed and replaced with language describing the case study locations. This language lists each location, explains how the locations were identified, and explains how the case studies are used to determine appropriate countermeasures at these and similar locations. The best description I've heard for this is that they're emblematic, not problematic. These locations are emblematic of similar signalized or unsignalized intersections, mid-block crossings, or roadway segments, and are used to recommend countermeasures that can be used across a broad range of similar project areas. They're not necessarily meant to provide specific project recommendations based around solving the most serious or problematic areas. Those most problematic areas will be addressed with site-specific project implementations that aren't explicitly captured in this more aspirational document. We hope that the revised language helps to make the document more understandable to the public. And with that, we'll get to the exciting stuff. What is an LRSP? What are we examining here and why? And how can we become a safer city in regard to our transportation network? We're lucky to have Laura Foranash, our contract traffic engineer, here with us tonight to walk through this very data-driven plan. Laura, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jessica, and good evening, honorable mayor and council members. So what is a local roadway safety plan? This project is being funded through a grant from Caltrans, so because of this, the LRSP has a specific process and stipulations. The first step is to identify common safety challenges in Agoura Hills. The LRSP is the means for providing local roadways with the opportunity to address unique safety needs in their jurisdictions. The second step is to recommend a toolbox of improvements. These improvements are called countermeasures. The LRSP offers a proactive approach to addressing safety needs and demonstrates agency responsiveness to safety challenges. to safety challenges. The last step is to increase the city's competitiveness for safety funding. The LRSP is a requirement for some Caltrans safety construction dollars. So, in order to receive these construction dollars, the city must complete this local roadway safety plan. Next slide, please. So, as noted, this is, this study is being administered by Caltrans. The city received a grant from the state for 90% of the cost of this project. As such, this is a well-defined process, and there are rules, formatting, and methodology that we are following. We've completed the collision analysis and met with our safety partners. In March, we hosted a safety partner workshop with members of the community, city staff, LVUSD, LASD, and the Law Enforcement, Fire, and Emergency Response Subcommittee. Based on feedback from our safety partners, we've drafted the plan you see before you tonight. Next slide. So, let's review the causes of crashes in Agora Hills. So, shown in the dark blue, the upper right-hand corner, 20% of crashes were caused by unsafe speed. Shown in green, as we move clockwise around the pie chart, 18% of crashes were caused by improper turning, which makes, which means making an illegal turn. Examples are making an illegal U-turn, not coming to a complete stop at a signal or a stop sign, or making a left turn when it's prohibited. Shown in light blue, 12% of the crashes were caused by improper driving. That includes swerving into an oncoming lane, ignoring traffic lights and stop signs. Lastly, shown in yellow, 12% of crashes were caused by vehicles failing to yield to another motorist. Next slide, please. So, now, let's look at crashes that are occurring in Agora Hills. On the X-axis is the time, so 20, 10 to 2019, and then the Y-axis is the number of crashes. So, over the last 10 years, you can see there is variability from year to year, but there are consistent reoccurring crash types. The most common occurring collision types were broadside, shown at the bottom in blue of each of the line graphs. Rear end accounted for 27%, shown in dark blue, and side swipes, shown in dark green. Next slide, please. So, here's a map of all of the city's crashes over the last five years. I will note this map was not specifically included in the LRSP document. The dots are representative of crashes that occurred at intersections, and the size of the dot corresponds to the, to the number of crashes. So, the bigger the dot, the more crashes. The colored line represents a crash along a segment, and the color of the segment corresponds to the number of collisions. So, major roadways and larger intersections are common areas of concern because of the high volumes. Main concentration of collisions are along Canaan Road, Reyes Adobe Road, and Agora Road. So, to provide some context, you know, as we're all aware, Canaan Road is far and away the most traffic volume, with over 35,000 vehicles a day. Reyes Adobe and Agora are nearly a third of that. And the secondary arterials like Canwood, roadside, Liberty Canyon, and Driver are less than 10,000. So, I wanted to highlight some areas of interest and the city's past efforts to address safety concerns. There's an orange segment on Kaneho View Drive south of Driver that had a heavy concentration of speed-related collisions, particularly side swipes with parked vehicles. The city installed centerline striping in October 2020 to better position vehicles away from the parked cars, as well as slow vehicles down by visually narrowing the roadway. The red segment on Canaan Road north of Thousand Oaks, adjacent to the Twin Oaks Shopping Center, has a high concentration of collisions, particularly at the full-access driveway between Starbucks and Carl's Jr. This driveway is undergoing a separate safety study. During the safety partner meeting, staff received feedback to restrict the left turn out of the Starbucks driveway. Currently, staff is working with the property owner to coordinate this effort. Next slide, please. So, based on the citywide data, we were able to identify challenge areas or emphasis areas. These areas are derived from patterns seen in the data. When looking at the fatal and severe collisions, one emphasis area is to reduce the number of collisions at signalized intersections. 40% of the city's fatal and severe collisions occurred at signalized intersections, which is 16% more than the statewide average. A second emphasis area is to reduce the number of collisions involving vulnerable road users, such as pedestrians and bicyclists. Half of the city's fatal and serious collisions involved pedestrians and bicyclists, which, for the pedestrians, that's 24% greater than the statewide average. We are consistent with the statewide average in regards to bicyclist collisions. The third emphasis area is to reduce crashes that are caused by driver behavior, specifically aggressive driving and impaired driving. 40% of fatal and severe collisions involved aggressive driving, which is 7% greater than the statewide average. And lastly, impaired driving, 33% of the city's fatal and serious collisions involved impaired driving, which is 10% greater than the statewide average. I will note that, you know, a collision can have more than one emphasis area at a signalized intersection involving a pedestrian and an impaired driver. So, if you're trying to add up, it's not going to get to 100. Next slide, please. So, from identifying the emphasis areas, we can propose the appropriate countermeasures or improvements to address the type of collisions we discussed. So, here's a small sampling of countermeasures that are available to the city. Caltrans and FHWA have a large database of countermeasures with before and after data to track the efficacy of the countermeasures. Next slide, please. So, here's our five case study locations, which were chosen to be representative of the city's corridors and intersection configurations, like Jessica mentioned. So, for each case study, countermeasures were developed to address the safety patterns at that location, and compiled into a toolbox that can also be applied to similar locations for a systematic approach. Next slide, please. So, the first case study location is Reyes Adobe and Stonecrest. This location serves Linderow Canyon Middle School and the adjacent neighborhoods. The intersection is unsignalized and stop-controlled on Stonecrest. While there is not a significant history of crashes, this location was selected based on stakeholder engagement. There is a marked crosswalk on the north leg of the intersection that is staffed with a crossing guard during school drop-off and pickup times. Reyes Adobe has two travel lanes and a bike lane in each direction. There's also turn pockets to turn onto Stonecrest, and this portion has a posted speed limit of 40 miles per hour. In the last five years, there have been three reported collisions, one vehicle-vehicle, and two hit object collisions. In 2021, the city installed white triangles on the approaches, known as yield lines, and additional signage in advance of the crosswalk to give drivers an additional warning of potential pedestrians in the road. Next slide, please. So, a potential countermeasure would be a pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as a Hawk signal, which would be mounted on a mast arm over Reyes Adobe Road. The signals would be actuated by pedestrians and stop traffic on Reyes Adobe. As pedestrians approached the intersection, they would push the pedestrian push button. The overhead signals, which are dark until actuated, will begin to flash yellow, then solid yellow, then solid red. Once the signal is solid, pedestrians will cross the roadway. After the pedestrian walk phase is over, vehicles, the signal will begin to flash red, allowing vehicles to drive through the intersection if a pedestrian is not present. So, this countermeasure is also applicable to the existing unmarked and uncontrolled crossing at Reyes Adobe Road and Rainbow Crest. I'll note that pedestrian crossing enhancements, such as this, is a specific category in this year's HSIP funding cycle. Next slide, please. The next case study is Lake Linderow Drive and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which also serves Linderow Canyon Middle School, the adjacent neighborhoods, the country club, and adjacent commercial areas. The intersection is signalized and also staffed by a crossing guard during school drop-off and pickup. This location was selected because the location has an overrepresented, over-representative number of pedestrians, pedestrian-involved collisions, which we identified as an emphasis area for the city. Thousand Oaks Boulevard has two travel lanes and a bike lane in each direction, there's also turn pockets, and in this portion, Thousand Oaks Boulevard has a posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour. In the last five years, there have been 12 reported collisions, including two broadside collisions and two vehicle-related collisions. Next slide, please. So, the countermeasures recommended for this location include adding a leading pedestrian interval, known as the LPI. This is built into the traffic signal timing to prioritize crossings, pedestrian crossings, and making them more visible to turning vehicles. LPIs give pedestrians a three-to-seven-second head start before the motorist. This head start allows the pedestrian to enter the crosswalk before the vehicles are given a green indication, allowing them time to establish their presence in the crosswalk before the motorists begin moving. This increases the likelihood of drivers yielding and improves the overall safety of the intersection. Another consideration is adding a protected left turn phase for the vehicles turning from Lake Linderow Drive to Thousand Oaks, giving them a dedicated turn phase which would reduce the conflict with conflicting vehicles. We'd also consider upgrading the signal heads with retroreflector borders to make the signals more noticeable and increase compliance. That's the yellow border you see at the 101 interchanges that Caltrans has installed over the past few years. Lastly, the advanced dilemma zone detection system reduces the number of drivers that are caught in that decision point, which is when the start time of the yellow phase begins. So, this measures the number of vehicles that are in that dilemma zone, and gauges when the yellow phase would be applied, and it tries to, in real time, reduce the number of people who are in that dilemma zone, and puts the drivers at a better position to make that decision, either to stop or to proceed through the intersection. So, it'll extend the green or terminate the green based on the number of vehicles in that zone. Also, regularly deploying the city's portable feedback unit to help address speed on Thousand Oaks. And lastly, refreshing the existing striping, including the high-visibility crosswalk. Next slide, please. The next case study, Canaan Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This was selected because it has an over-representative number of collisions involving aggressive driving. The city has been working with LA County on an ongoing basis to fine-tune the intersection. In February, the city added red clearance to the intersection, so this is an interval at the end of the yellow indication, and it's essentially a one-second hold on the intersection before any conflicting phase gets a green signal. The intent is to help address broadside collisions and red light compliance. Most of the, sorry, next slide, please. The countermeasures for Canaan and Thousand Oaks are very similar to Lake Linderow, so I'll pass through these, including an LPI being programmed into the traffic signals, upgrading the signal heads with retroreflective borders, having dilemma zone detection into the vehicle detection. But, one differentiating countermeasure is the installation of countdown pedestrian signals, which are not present at this intersection. So, countdown pedestrian signals provide pedestrians with more information on how much time is left in the walk phase, which is important given the proximity to the high school. Again, these countermeasures can be applied to most, if not all, the signalized intersections in the city. Next slide. The next location is Driver Avenue and the intersection of Kaneho View and Driver Avenue, which is south of Agora High School. This location was selected because the overall observed crash rates are higher than expected given the facility type and the volume. Driver Avenue is one lane in each direction with 30 to 35 mile per hour speed limit along the segment. In the last five years, there have been 11 reported collisions, two involved pedestrians, and three involved parked vehicles. Next slide, please. For this location, we would install an edgeline striping to help visually narrow the roadway and slow drivers down, as well as clearly delineating the parking lane and the travel lane to position moving vehicles away from parked cars. We would also install yield lines in advance of the crosswalk to indicate where vehicles are supposed to yield to pedestrians. We would provide a curb extension or a bulbout to shorten the crossing distance across Driver Avenue for the pedestrians, as well as improve the visibility of the pedestrians to the drivers. Similar bulbout treatments and edgeline striping can be applied at lower-volume, lower-speed facilities adjacent to schools or similar areas. I think roadside is a great option, as well as Cornell and other similar collector. Next slide, please. Lastly, the section of Canwood west of Reyes Adobe was examined. This was selected because, again, like Driver, had an overall observed crash rate that was higher than expected based on the facility type and vehicle volumes. In the last five years, there have been a total of five reported collisions. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, six. So, the countermeasures for, you know, the intersection at Lake Linderow, as well as the segment along Canwood, would be to include restriping the roadway, to include edgeline striping, to, again, to delineate that on-street parking, as well as visually narrowing the road and reducing speeding. A consideration of a traffic circle at the intersection of Lake Linderow Drive to slow Canwood vehicles down. A consideration of speed cushions in the residential portion of Canwood, so west of Lake Linderow, and radar speed feedback signs as well to educate drivers. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Laura. As we've mentioned, the approval of the LRSP qualifies the city to apply for Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, or HCP funding. Applications for this grant only open every two years, and this year, they are due in mid-September. This year, that program has identified pedestrian crossing enhancements as a funding set aside, which means our likelihood of securing those grants are very high. Should the city council vote to approve the LRSP, staff will return in August with a consent item resolving to apply for that funding. Using case study one as a basis, staff intends to apply for installation of Hawk signals at both Stonecrest and Rainbow Crest on Reyes Adobe Road. These improvements are identified for design in the city's fiscal year 2223 budget, and HSIP funding is currently the hopeful revenue source to fund the project through design and construction. So, with that, I conclude our presentation for the evening. We appreciate your consideration of this important safety plan, and staff respectfully recommends the approval of the LRSP and adoption of resolution 22-2016. Laura and I welcome any questions the city council may have.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Before we move to public comment, do any of my fellow council members have any questions? Councilmember Northrup?
Yes. Just a question in terms of all the optional, or the options for countermeasures. Would that then come, I know we had already talked about the Hawk beacon, whatever it is, for those two, but with respect to some of these others, would that then come back to the Public Works Subcommittee, to come back to the council as to what we would do in these other instances? I'm assuming those are all options, but we haven't made decisions on some of those other intersections. Is my understanding correct?
So, the intent of the plan would be that the case studies cover both signalized and unsignalized intersections, segments of roadway, and pedestrian crossings, like the Hawk signals. And so, each of those case studies lists the appropriate countermeasures that are defined by both the federal and state government, right? Most of these, oh, I'm sorry, not most, each of these countermeasures is, has been studied, there's statistics behind the implementation of these countermeasures, having a specific reduction, a calculated reduction in the crash ratio. So, each case study has identified countermeasures that you would use across a broad range of projects or areas throughout the city, right? So, if we're looking at signalized intersection, there would be a list of countermeasures in that case study that could be applied across any of our signalized cross-sections. The nice thing about this document is it is aspirational, and so, as we identify areas of most concern, this document is guided- And so as we identify areas of most concern, this document is guidance to both the City Council and any of our subcommittees to say, hey, let's take a look at this location. Is it in the LRSP? And then we can pull it up and say, these are the appropriate countermeasures. And if you'd like us to develop a budget and a scope and a plan for implementing this, we have a road paved already to do that.
And we have already discussed and are ready to move forward with the HAWK beacons, correct?
We do, yes.
For those two, Stonecrest and Rainbowcrest. And then this gives us a range of options to, as we keep moving forward, to look for more funding and be able to implement more of these. So I just kind of wanting to make sure what we've already committed to, what's aspirational. And so the only thing we've committed to at this moment are the beacon Hawks for those two intersections. And this gives us a roadmap to look at additional countermeasures for the future.
Yes, and how we would typically recommend those countermeasures be applied.
And hopefully get some -- would we be able to look for more funding, then, through the HSIP, or?
So the local road safety plan qualifies us for a slew of grant opportunities. The HSIP that is going to be available in September, the only project that we've identified to apply for funding for is the HAWK signal. The set aside of funding amount for that is a quarter million dollars. So we're going to apply in the full amount of that grant. And in the future, I mean, this, off the top of my head, I don't have a list of the grants that this would qualify for us to apply for, but there are many. Being consistent with the state and federal government's plan with this LRSP aligns us really well for future funding.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your work on this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Farkas, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you for making it so clear for us, and the presentation was really helpful. Two questions. First of all, the HAWK signals. I just want to be clear, because I know I've mentioned this a couple of times, but the council has not approved anything other than to put into the budget itself to look into it for these studies, correct? We have not approved what those would look like.
No, we have not approved what those would look like. The HSIP funding grants are due in September. If we were -- we anticipate we'd be really well positioned to receive that funding. If we received that funding, we would then design those signals, and that would go through the Public Works Subcommittee. So don't leave me, Elise. You would help review that. Say forever. And Dennis, I'm looking at you, too. But no, we would design those at that stage. It would go through a typical design, bid, build process, and both the design -- so this plan was funded through a federal grant itself. And then the HSIP grant would fund design and construction of any improvements.
Thank you. And the other question I had, and Ms. Farkas, if you can go back to the map that you said was not included, just for a second. Am I seeing it correctly that the big red dots on Canaan, at least three or four of them, are south of the 101?
I wonder if they can pull that site up, but I have a paper copy. So the three is essentially the interchange northbound, southbound, and Agora Road. Those were the three dots.
Oh, okay. I thought the mayor was talking, and I'm like, wait a minute. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so those three dots were south of the 101?
So it's the intersection with the 101?
Okay.
So the intersection of north -- yeah.
And then Agora Road, there it is.
Yep.
If I may, I'd like to provide one clarification. While this specific map is not included with the LRSP, this is a compilation of several maps that are included. So all of this information is found in the LRSP, but we thought for presentation purposes, this was the more appropriate way to go.
And I think it's helpful, or at least to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Absolutely. Go ahead. Councilmember Weber?
Thank you so much. Yeah, this presentation made a lot more sense than all the information in the staff report. I read it several times, and I appreciate you sending me some additional information, Jessica. But I'll tell you, I never knew there were so many acronyms in the world when I saw this thing. I mean, it went on and on and on. And I never heard the phrase dilemma zone until today. You have -- so this is some good information for me. But I have to go back. The one question I have, and I loved the presentation, was are you saying that the initial request for funding would be for $250,000? I understand that, but are there certain timeframes that we have to keep on applying for as we go forward with the other areas of concern for the city?
So as we choose what portions of this plan we want to advance, we would need to apply for additional funding, or there are some local funding measures that we could implore for -- or I'm sorry, let me just make that easier. We have regional funding through, like, Measure R and Measure M that can be applied to these striping projects pretty easily if we identify them. But the HSIP grant funding would be specifically in the amount of $250,000 for the installation, for the design and construction of the HAWK signals.
Okay. Because when I go -- when I read the report, this is, if you could implement all of these things, it'd be millions of dollars.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, Mayor Purtem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, first, I wanted to also say it was an excellent presentation, Jessica. Appreciate the presentation. I wanted to ask you a question, or I wanted to ask about, I noticed that as I was reading through the material, it said aggressive driving and impaired driving were kind of the leading cause of a lot of the fatalities or serious injuries. And I, a lot of the countermeasures that you discussed tonight didn't really include anything specifically kind of addressing that. And so one of the questions I was going to ask about, like, could we include or not, like, the sobriety checkpoints? Like, I didn't see that as a countermeasure. Was wondering maybe why not, and would that go through a different committee, or?
So that's a great question. The countermeasures weren't selected by staff. The countermeasures are actually, like, data-backed implementation measures by the state and federal government. So they take a large cross-section of where these types of improvements have been installed and how successful they've been in reducing crashes. Now, if the city were interested in implementing sobriety checkpoints, I don't know that this document would be the appropriate place to adopt that. But I think that, you know, City Manager Hamburg, and I could speak about that and see, you know, talk about that a little bit further internally.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to -- was wondering on that. And then I also noticed in the document, it was mentioned about how a lot of the infrastructure bill included a huge amount of money for this safe streets and roads, which is fantastic. And so is that where some of the grants that we'll be applying for will come from that money?
I believe we intend to go after any funding mechanism that we can that would improve safety in our city. And we're trying to understand a little bit better as the infrastructure bill is rolling out where our place in that is. Having the LRSP adopted, again, it just positions us really well to say, we have a plan for spending that money. Give it to us, and let us design and construct these projects.
Awesome. I think those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have a few questions. I'm not sure if we can pull up that map again that we had up earlier with the compilation of all the other maps. Oh, she got it ready. Okay. So this map was not in the presentation, but the specific maps of crash data and property damage data and all that were. And what seems to be inconsistent for me is, in the document itself, there was no data for Liberty Canyon and the 101 freeway. And I understand that that's a Caltrans area, and that's not a local off-ramp, but it seems to be inconsistent with the other two off-ramps, which is Canaan and Reyes Adobe. So can you help me -- in this one, this map does have a little bit of data for, from what I can see, it looks very small. It's hard to see the freeway on this one. But it does look like there's some data for Liberty Canyon. Maybe you can just help me understand what's going on at Liberty Canyon, because we know that there are a lot of concerns and incidents there, and I'm sure our local roads leading up to that are kind of up for discussion.
Yeah, great question. So if the map is panned over a little bit more to the left on the right edge, we are showing collisions at Liberty Canyon. We are in active talks with Caltrans. It's an ongoing conversation, is a nice way to put it. We've submitted several FOIA Freedom of Information Act requests for their data. There's several, what we say are collisions versus what they say are collisions is different. And so there is, there are collisions at that. There's just a disagreement on the number of collisions there. So, yeah.
Very interesting. Okay. Would you say, in your opinion, that that area is more, statistically more represented than the state average in terms of the types of accidents that happen there, like some of the other areas? I mean, it seems anecdotally to me that that's a problem area, but I'm just curious what your professional thought is on that, knowing that you don't have exactly all the consistent data that you need.
I would say that's probably one of the top locations where failing to yield right-of-way would be, it's probably the top, you know, location in the city. So, yes, I think it's statistically significant.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, in the document, you had a list of existing efforts that are ongoing right now that play into this plan. The Ladyface Mountain-specific plan, Agora Village-specific plan, our Bike Master Plan that we're working on, evacuation plan, obviously that all plays into it. I'm curious why the Canaan Corridor Study was not listed on that.
So that's an excellent question. The Canaan Corridor Study is, has moved into more of a design, preliminary engineering phase. And it's not, it's not going to result in a plan that's similar to something like this, or the Bike Master Plan, the General Plan, Agora Village-specific plan. Those are all aspirational documents. The Canaan Corridor Study is more of a design project at this stage. That's why you wouldn't necessarily see the Canaan-Agora interchange on that list either, or any of the design projects that we're working on listed in that. I believe you're referencing Table 3. So that's sort of why I hope that that answer is sufficient.
Okay. It's Table 1 on the document, and so what you're saying is the Canaan Corridor Study is very, very specific, and this is more high?
Yes.
You know, maybe not 30,000 mile, but 20,000 mile.
The plans listed in that table are, yeah, they're 30,000 feet view where Canaan, we're measuring inches on the road. You know, it's a different level document.
Got it. Okay. And then my last question is, when you mentioned the Twin Oaks Shopping Center, which, you know, we definitely hear anecdotally, and it seems to be proven by the data that it's a dangerous left when you're leaving that shopping center to go north. You say you're in discussions with the property owners about making a no-left. Would that be something that would come to us, or would that just happen? Because my fear is that, and I don't like the left there. I'm not advocating that we should be making a left there. But my fear is that, you know, we get a lot of, very, very many people who shop there live either in the north part of Agora Hills or in Oak Park and are going north. And so that puts more pressure, if you have to turn right and then make a U-turn or something at Canaan and Agora Road, which, I'm sorry, at Canaan and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which we already know is actually our most problematic intersection. I worry that if we just do that without really discussing, it might cause more problems than it helps. What would be the process of that?
So that was discussed at our Law Enforcement and Safety Subcommittee. We received direction based on the high frequency of collisions at that driveway, both vehicle pedestrian, vehicle cyclist, vehicle-vehicle, and the number of turning movements, that restricting the left turn from the shopping center northbound onto Canaan would be appropriate. And so we are trying to get ahold of the property owner to see if they, you know, if they'd be amenable to allowing us to put the striping and signage on their property, because we'd need to have a stop bar that said, and signs that said, "No Left Turn." And beyond that, I think we would probably go back through the Public Works Subcommittee to recommend placing that signage. But typically for signage and things like that, we don't come back to the entire City Council. That's a significant enough one, that if you felt that we should, then we absolutely could do that. And if you'd like to provide any direction on what you'd like to see when we bring it back, I'd be happy to take that.
Okay. I do have additional comments on that, which I can save for deliberation, but that answers my question for now. Any last questions? Okay, then we will move to public comment. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I will defer to our city clerk to see if we have any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There are no in-person written comments or speakers. I'll defer to staff for any online public testimony.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Then we can move into deliberations. And this went through the Law Enforcement Subcommittee, so maybe we can start with one of you, if you'd like to kick it off, maybe Councilmember Weber?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have some discussion on this, but I don't recall giving direction, or maybe I mistaken, but I know that what we did talk about was the ability to either go out on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, make a left, and then a left going northbound on Canaan Road, or have an egress near where Yum Yum Donut is, or Agora Deli. So that was the discussion we had. But I think to defer to the safety part of this, I know I've tried to get out that area, too. So I think that was, that's my recollection of what we talked about at that Subcommittee level. So otherwise, having said that, I have to also, Councilmember Enst, they could maybe recollect something, some comments. But as far as the rest of the presentation, I'm certainly ready to move forward, and I appreciate so much the presentation by both, Jessica and Laura. It makes a lot of sense to me. I just wish we could go forward and get all the money at once, but that's me. So I am more than happy to be one of the first ones to go forward with this. And I think that this whole area in Agora Hills, if we could just have people have a different approach to where they drive vehicles. To me, it's almost like greed level. I want to get there faster than everybody else, and they are distracted, and they, it's all these many issues combined to make some of the issues we have in our city, just like every other city that has, certainly a road like Canaan Road. It is so busy. It is so busy. And when I saw the number of cars at the different intersections in the, in the report, it was amazing to me that I had no idea that many cars, like for example, I think, I believe TO and Canaan, it's 45,000 cars a day go through that intersection. And over in TO and Lake Lindero, over 15,000. That's, that's an amazing number of people driving their cars, and I'm amazed it isn't worse. So I appreciate again the presentation and the information that is given to us, and I'm prepared to move forward.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Anstead, appreciate if you would weigh in on this. Next.
I think, I actually, again, Jessica enjoyed the presentation. I'm happy with the recommendations. I, I think that they're thoroughly analyzed. I think a lot of the, looking at the facts and the data about the accidents involving pedestrians and bikes, bicyclists, I think you address, or we address, a lot of the issues in the plan with what's put out there, and I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Northrup.
Well, first, I want to thank our staff and our traffic specialist for putting all this information together. I think it's really important for us to have the data and to be informed, and I really appreciate you following up with Caltrans on the Liberty Canyon issues. I know that's not always easy. They don't always get applauded like they did at the wildlife crossing groundbreaking. And, and I really appreciate your persistence because it's important for us to drill down and really address what's going on, especially in light of what recently happened. So in that sense, I think there's more to do, but this document provides such a great, I hate to say it, roadmap, you'll pardon the pun, but it's a great opportunity for us to be able to keep moving forward and improving safety. I will say for the community that I'm a bit disappointed that we are ahead of the state in our impaired driving and aggressive driving, and I would urge people to take a breath and calm down. We live in one of the most beautiful places on the planet. We're very blessed to be able to be here, and it's time to take a deep breath and slow down. So maybe we can do some things to encourage and help our residents do that. The one thing I will say is I, I do share our mayor's concern that if we are doing something that could impact traffic flow onto Canaan, I would like to see that come back for a full discussion, not because I question the recommendations, but because I think it's very important that we have full transparency and we give the public an opportunity, and they don't always come to our Subcommittee meetings. I mean, we invite them to, but I think it's really important that we have redundancy in terms of our attempts to reach out and provide information. And I, for one, would like to have access to a lot of the justifications and get those questions answered, and I'm sure you have great answers. But we don't want to be scrambling around after the fact, piecemeal justifying things that we've done that may have a temporary impact on people, where they're all of a sudden going, well, what about this and what about that? So I really would encourage there to be a full discussion before the council whenever we're doing something that would create a change that's going to impact that corridor. So I support bringing that back. I think it's a great report. I'm excited that we have some opportunities to do some things to enhance and improve safety, and I thank you for the, the hard work, and I'm prepared to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are similar to what everybody has said. I too agree that if we're going to change that left turn, it needs to come to a full hearing so that we can hear from the residents and the local businesses. And you asked what you could do. I'd like to know what the impact would be if we have a no-left turn next to Starbucks. What happens to the left turn at a Yum Yum and out of City Mall? Because if the left turns are allowed there, there's going to be twice as many cars making left turns out of there. So just something to look at. I'm sure you would, and I'm sure you'd consider it. I'm a big fan of plans. I think it's a great way to go. I think they have served the city well over the years. We have all kinds of plans, and so it just streamlines our budget procedures when we want to spend money on something like, you know, and obviously, safety of our residents and our pedestrians and our drivers and our bikes is so important. So having a plan is just going to be to our benefit. So I appreciate that you got the funding for the plan, and then we can work on the measures that you come up with as time goes on. I too agree that, I'm a little confused on the Liberty Canyon, if we're talking about the Caltrans crashes or the intersection of Agora Road and Liberty Canyon crashes. I'm assuming they're not one and the same, correct? Yeah. And so I really appreciate that you're getting the data from Caltrans so we can really examine those on and off ramps. And at the same time, I'd like to understand what's happening at the intersection of Liberty Canyon and Agora Road a little better. And maybe offline, you can explain it to me, but I just, I know they're too different, and I just want to make sure they're both being accounted for. As you know, we, our residents have been talking to us about that for years, so we'd like to be able to at least understand what needs to be done and if we can have some more measures, you know, and I know you're already working with Caltrans on that, so congratulations. Unsafe speed and improper turning seem to be a big part of the causes of our collisions, and so anything we can do, like tonight, lowering the speed limit from 45 to 40, you know, and maybe in a couple of years, I think there was a time period that we now wait, and in a couple of years, we can revisit the speed limit on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and some of the other high-volume areas in the city where we're seeing speed and improper turning. Let's see. Oh, the Bike Master Plan last night. I'm assuming it's, I'm thrilled that the two of you were working on the Bike Master Plan, and you've put together the local roadway safety plan, so I know that they, you have combined the two and are conscious of the bikes, but that's obviously going to be critical because we're hoping to get that Bike Master Plan before the council, and if they approve it, that then, you know, we would start measures on that as well. So thank you for the work that you're doing. I know on behalf of the community, they're thrilled that anytime we can make our streets safer, and this will help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I first want to say that I really appreciate this document. I believe the technical term of my reviewing is called geeking out. I geeked out on this document over the weekend. I love it. It was fascinating to me, and I appreciate that you both met with me earlier in the week to help me understand. I was one of those who did not understand how the case studies played into all this, so I want to first say thank you for really spelling that out, that these case studies are not so necessarily specific, but really represent the types of issues that we're facing throughout the city. And so I wanted to thank you for taking that extra step to clarify that in this document. I think that's very helpful for those of us who are laymen and women reading it, really appreciate it. I, I also just want to really reiterate that I'm worried about that Twin Oaks Shopping Center issue because, you know, I, my fear is that if someone is trying to get north, they'll, they'll go turn right, you know, south on Canaan and then hold up a huge backlog of cars as they try to make a U-turn to go north. And so I would ask, like my fellow council members, that not only before we work with the property owner on that, can we do a little bit of a traffic analysis of what options people would likely take if we were to restrict that left, and, you know, how we might be able to mitigate any kind of slowdown that might come from that. I know this is your, your work, and we don't want to fix a problem and create two, so I, I trust that you, you would know how to analyze that, and then if you could bring that back to us. And to Councilmember Northrup's point, it's, it's not that we don't trust any analysis, it's that we're going to be the first here on Nextdoor, or in the, on, on social media, you know, or, or stopped at the market, you know, why do you people do X, Y, Z? And we definitely need to be the, the voice of, of explanation and reason and explain the safety enhancements and, and really be able to justify the decisions that we, that we make. So I thank you in advance for that. And along those lines, the other part of the document that gave me a little bit of pause like, like that specific left was the traffic circle. And look, I know, I, I love a good traffic circle, and I can drive a traffic circle, but I will say that our residents have a lot of opinions on traffic circles. So that would be another one that I would say if it, if it, and I know it would come to us, but before we get too far, if it ever gets to, to discussing a traffic circle, I'd love to discuss that as a council because, again, we would be the ones to, to have to explain and justify, and lots of opinions on that. So with that, I want to thank you again. I think it is an excellent document, and I really appreciate the, kind of the aggressive timing on it because, you know, I appreciate just knowing that the funds are out there and that we have a good shot of getting them because we're so on top of it. So thank you once again. With that, I will ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 22-2016 adopting the City of Agora Hills Local Roadway Safety Plan.
Councilmember Northrup, so moves.
Councilmember Buckley Weber seconds the motion.
Thank you, and we'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. Don't think our city attorney has to pop in on this one. Okay. Any comments from our staff? No? Councilmembers, any comments as we get ready to adjourn? Councilmember Buckley Weber.
I just had a couple of comments as to Bruce Wizen, some fun facts that I learned about him since his passing, that he was a real pillar in the community at Camp Ramah, which is not far from here. I thought that was a fun fact. He's a pillar in the Jewish community, particularly in the San Fernando Valley, which is where he spent most of his life, that he was, he was a hippie who loved Birkenstocks, and that for fun, he liked to take his entire family and grandchildren to Club Med for Families. So those are some fun facts. He was a great storyteller is what I remember of him, and he really remembered or knew the history of Agora Hills and loved to share it with whoever would listen. So may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? I just want to add before we adjourn in Bruce Wizen's memory, and also we have one other adjourned in memory. My only comment is that I was on the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health COVID call today, and as you can see, we're all pretty, being pretty conservative up here with our masking. And unfortunately, there is a rise not only in cases, not only in hospitalizations, but sadly with deaths as well. And if we continue on this path, we will meet the CDC guidelines of needing to implement indoor masking again as part of our daily lives. So I just want to encourage everyone that if you are indoors or in a crowded space outdoors, you don't have to wait for the CDC to tell you that you can put on a mask. And I just want to say thank you to all of us here tonight for, you know, really trying to, to keep any kind of spread that may be happening to, to a minimum. So thank you. And with that, we are going to adjourn in memory for two very special people. The first one is Bruce Wizen, who we've spoken about and who I have no doubt we are going to be speaking about again as time moves on. The second person, also very poignant and sad to the topics we're discussing tonight, is an adjournment in memory of David Martin Roberts, who passed away a few weeks ago on Agora Road. Dave Roberts was part of the Las Verginis Municipal Water District Team for over six years as the Resource Conservation Manager. He was a strong, engaging, and collaborative leader with a deep wealth of knowledge. He was incredibly passionate, an expert in sustainable landscaping, conservation, land use, climate change, ecosystem integrity, anything to do with native and climate-appropriate plants, and possessed many more skills that made him invaluable. One of his most significant achievements was the district's Sustainability Garden, where he championed its, its development, implementation, and continued management. He was very proud of the garden and how it furthers the idea of integrating sustainable landscaping into our region to conserve water and provide much-needed habitat for pollinators and other animals. Prior to joining the Water District, Dave enjoyed a robust and highly impactful career as an environmental strategist. During his career, he developed and implemented complex natural resource programs, including managing large multidisciplinary teams, multimillion-dollar budgets, and a highly visible, and highly visible collaborative projects throughout the state of California. He dedicated over 13 years to preserving the beautiful natural resources in the Lake Tahoe region via his roles with various agencies, including Assistant Executive Director of the League to Save Lake Tahoe, Environmental Scientist for the La Honton Region, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and District Manager for the Tahoe Resource Conservation District. From there, Dave brought his resource conservation talents to private organizations, Maroni Bio Innovations and River Partners, focused on environmental restoration and resources before joining the Las Verginis Municipal Water District. Dave held two bachelor's degrees, one in biology botany and the other in business administration. He enjoyed learning and sharing his knowledge and expertise with others. He was highly engaging and had a talent for igniting interest in others on the topic of resource conservation, even among those who were not familiar with his field. His passion for what he did was apparent in all of his interactions with others. Most importantly, Dave was a tremendously caring, considerate, and delightful person. He had a contagious sense of humor and a hearty laugh that brought joy to everyone around him. He was a colleague, friend, and inspiration. On behalf of the City of Agora Hills, I wish to extend our sincere condolences to the family, friends, and Las Verginis Municipal Water District coworkers of Dave Roberts. He was a dedicated and contributing member to our region and will be dearly missed. With that, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting in memory of Bruce Wizen and Dave Roberts. Oh, for, let me first say, I missed this last time too. The regular meeting of July 27, 2022 has been canceled. The regular next, the next regular City Council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Wednesday, August 10, 2022, in the Council Chambers of the Civic Center. It is anticipated that members of the public will have the opportunity to participate in person in the Council Chambers or by remote video conferencing via Zoom. And at this time, I'll take that motion and a second.
Oh, Councilmember Buckley Weber moves to adjourn in the honor and the memory of Dave Roberts as well as Bruce Wizen. Thank you.
Councilmember Northrup seconds.
Thank you, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Northrup.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.